The clerk has asked me to recap what I did at the end of the session yesterday. There was a motion made by Senator Tommy Morrison to add Senator Mike Siniklas as a cosponsor on Bill 105, and I accepted the motion, or there was no objection to his motion. I accepted the motion, and we also sent the bill down to the voting file. Okay? So I just wanted, for clarification, so that...
I do not order what happens.
Well. And so this morning, we resumed discussions on bills, and so I believe that at this time, Senator Nerissa Underwood, you are recognized for your Bill 119.
Good morning, and thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I would like to make a motion to place Bill 119-33COR in the third reading file.
Any objection?
And I would like to speak on it, please.
Please.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Speaker, to present Bill 11933. And I would like to thank the Chairman of the Committee in the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary for ensuring that a public hearing was held and that the committee report completed, which opened the door for us to discuss the bill during this August session. Mr. Speaker, Bill 119-33COR is an act to amend Section 3207H and I of Chapter 3, Article 2, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, Sections 3102, 3105, 3108, 3109, 3202A7, 3204, and 3206 of Chapter 3. Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing equal protection for all families in Guam by creating equality in civil marriage. Bill 119-33 may be referred to as the Guam Marriage Equality Act of 2015. Bill 11933 was introduced in early June, in fact, the same day that the Honorable Judge Taidinko Gatewood handed down the ruling on the unconstitutionality of existing marriage laws that ban same-sex marriage in Guam. If you recall, Kathleen Aguero and Loretta Pangalina had to sue Governor Calvo in the District Court of Guam because they were denied a marriage license despite the ruling that the Ninth Circuit Court had made about the constitutionality of the same-sex marriage. That was the day that Judge Taidinko Gatewood ruled that Governor Calvo must issue a marriage license to Aguero and Pangalina, and that the decision under the Ninth Circuit Court is clear. Quote, "Once a federal circuit court issues a decision, the district courts within the circuit are bound to follow it and have no authority to await a ruling by the Supreme Court before applying the circuit court's decision as binding authority," end quote. The intent of Bill 11933 is to comply with the District Court of Guam's ruling on June 8, 2015, and more recently, the landmark decision by the U.S. Supreme Court on June 26, 2015, that affirmed that the right to same-sex marriage is a constitutional right across the entire United States. With that said, Bill 11933 amends current Guam law to be in line with the U.S. Supreme Court decision and the District Court of Guam ruling that marriage is a legal union between two people without regard to gender. As I stated during the public hearing on this bill, there is an historical effort in Guam to equalize civil rights for all people regardless of their gender. I thank all those who have paved this way. And while it has taken some time for people to organize around and further articulate the need for change, today, we have the ability to solidify this endeavor. As an example of the usefulness of previous efforts, Section 9 of Bill 11933, Section 9, 3204B, Chapter 3, 19GCA, refers to the exemption of requirement to solemnize marriage by minister, priest, or religious organization. This language is similar to language included in legislation, which you introduced around six years ago, which was Bill 13830, and which also protects the views of religious organizations. Even prior to 2015, U.S. Supreme Court ruling, a number of states that allowed for civil unions and marriages did not require religious institutions to perform solemnizations, including but not limited to Colorado, Hawaii, Illinois, and Delaware. While we require all public and civic officials to afford all our citizens the opportunity to enter into lawful marriage, we do not do so in a manner that is unmindful of the right to practice faith in a house of worship in accordance with the beliefs of that faith. Accordingly, this legislation carves out an exemption for any member of the clergy or any church or any religion from being required to perform a same-sex marriage. This exemption is specified herein so that religious institutions will not be required to perform same-sex marriage unless they wish to do so. I note that this is a carefully crafted, conscientious exemption that is being afforded religious institutions, but this is not an exemption which any public official who is authorized to perform marriages may rely on. Accordingly, any senator, or vice mayor, or vice mayor, or governor cannot turn down a same-sex marriage on the basis that they individually object to it even on religious grounds. All public officials are sworn to uphold the law fairly and equitably, and we are no more allowed to discriminate against same-sex marriages than we are allowed to object to interracial marriage or object to marriage between individuals who are divorced or have been married in the past. It is true that public officials may have scheduling difficulties or issues related to the performance of marriages, but if there is a pattern of avoiding same-sex marriages or evidence that a public official may be refusing to perform a same-sex marriage, they subject themselves to more than the court of public opinion. They may find themselves in front of a real court to answer questions about discriminatory behavior. This religious exemption is narrow, and it's not meant to be a vehicle for anyone other than those who work in a religious institution to exercise. It is important to note, once again, that this legislation brings us into compliance with our Burgerfield ruling in the U.S. Supreme Court. This legislation is no longer discretionary in our part. The governor stated through his legal representation in front of the district court that he will yield to the decision of the judge. Of course, neither he nor this body has the option of not yielding, nor do we have the opportunity to indicate our objection. We could end the justification of this legislation right now and simply state that this is a matter of compliance. We have no choice. We must align our laws with the decisions that have been appropriately made. But in reality, this is a historical moment in which we must do more than just obey or comply. It is a time when we must affirm and include into our society those who choose to marry members of the same gender, because it is not just a matter of justice. It is a matter of equality. It is a matter of fairness. It is a matter that recognizes the full humanity of all of our citizens who wish to express their love for another human being through lawful marriage. Many state that this is the civil rights issue of our time. I propose this legislation not merely as a matter of legislative housekeeping, but as a joyful, spiritual attempt to recognize all members of our island's society. Let our voices and our votes reflect that Guam is doing more than obeying a court decision, that it is affirming the existence and the humanity of all of our citizens without regard to gender status. It is the appropriate time, it is the right place, and it is the right thing to do. Thank you again, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to discuss this bill on session floor. I look forward to a healthy discussion with my colleagues on this very important matter, and ultimately, to the passage of Bill 11933 by this body.
Thank you very much, Senator Underwood. I noticed Senator Frank Blas' hand go up. Any other senator wish to be heard on this? Senator Blas, and after Senator Blas, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, and I recognize and I appreciate the necessity, actually, for the legislation. You're right. I mean, the author of the legislation does recognize that as a result of recent Supreme Court ruling, there may be a matter of, for lack of a better term, legislative housekeeping that's necessary to make sure that our laws conform to the Supreme Court ruling. However, that said, Mr. Speaker, I need to bring up two areas of concern that I have. First off, is in the construction of the bill. Standing rules of the legislature basically says the bill should have no more than one subject. And I recognize that in the body, and just if you look at the title of the bill, this basically explains, and it says that it wants to bring, by creating equality in civil marriage. It talks about wanting to make sure that our laws conform and comply to the Supreme Court ruling. And I have no issue with that. While I don't have an issue with the other area, though, you know, I have to bring this up as a point of concern, is then we get into Page 4, Section 9, when it starts to talk about now who may solemnize. And I understand, and, you know, Mr. Speaker, based on the presentation provided by the author and everything, this, you know, it, just in that presentation itself, there were two separate subjects. And so I think for a matter of consistency, and a matter of keeping in line with the rules that this body must follow, I have concern with whether or not these are two separate pieces of legislation. Now, I need to make sure one thing. I don't have a problem. As a matter of fact, I support, you know, what I say. My concern is that appears to be two pieces of legislation. It may be in the same chapter, it may be talking about something, but it is, one is, it now identifies what marriage is, and then the other one is identifying who can solemnize. So I don't want, you know, it's, I guess it's going to be something that this body is going to have to determine. I'm not standing here opposing it, that it should happen, because, again, keeping in mind of the Supreme Court, it's, I'm just concerned that it goes against even, you know, what this body, the rules that this body has said they have to follow. Now, second point of concern that I have here is, I want to make sure that, you know, this has the full force and effect that it should have. And Page 1, Line 13, where it's crossed out, it says, "The legality of the union may be established by civil or religious regulations as recognized by the laws of Guam." I don't know whether that's an action-type activity, okay? Whether there may be some question as to whether or not an individual, if, when, when the ceremony or the marriage is performed, whether or not this section, if deleting it, then puts the question as to whether or not it was actually official, or is recognized by law.
What line was that again, please?
Page 1, starting on Line 13. "The legality of the union may be established by civil or religious regulations or recognized by the laws of Guam." So it may be a legal question. I just want to make sure that by striking this out, there may be some question as to whether or not the ceremony is actually conforms to the law and can be recognized. I know that, you know, the operative word here is "may," but still, I'm just concerned. I don't want, you know, two individuals who are now thinking that their marriage has been solemnized. I'll give you a case in point, Mr. Speaker. I was supposed to, I was married in January of 2005, but for some odd reason, my paperwork never made it, from the individual that performed my wedding ceremony, never turned the paperwork into public health for three years, for four years. So there was some question as to whether or not I was married. Now, granted, yes, my wife and I, it's settled, we're married, don't worry about it, I got the ring on, okay? And I got the permission slip in my back pocket to say I'm the boss. But it's just that, okay? And I don't want this, again, you know, I see the need and I see the importance, but I just want to make sure that, you know, there's no question, you know, I reference to a concern I had with the previous bill. I'm just concerned, and I want to make sure that it, okay? So I know, Mr. Speaker, there are two points, two areas of concern, and I don't know, you know, maybe what we should, I would prefer, is maybe for the sake of being able to, you know, deal with it, the question of whether or not these are, in fact, two pieces of, you know, that can be two different subjects. Because if you read, like I said, the title, then you read the whole intent, I don't see how Section 9 on Page 4 fits with the title on the front. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the first, I will ask legal counsel. On, let's take a short break. Then we'll start. That's the only one, that's the only cross-out, it'd be those three words.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. So on that amendment, on your second point, Senator, as it relates to whether or not it's one subject, the chair will find that it is one subject to try to address who can do it. But you're talking about marriage.
I'll accept the ruling of the chair, sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I just needed to bring up that point.
And there were other reasons, but it's that. It's all one.
I understand.
Okay. And, yes, on the motion, Senator Rodriguez and you? Senator Rodriguez, and then Senator Munir Bynum.
Hafedeh, good morning, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, and good morning to our colleagues. Mr. Speaker, I, just like the retiring speaker, I, you know, I too have no, really, you know, real problems with this piece of measure, as I have come to the realization and acceptance that this is something that we must do in terms of, perhaps, as it was termed, legislative housekeeping. And so, you know, I think we can move past that. I do have a concern, though, Mr. Speaker, on Section 9. And now that it has been ruled that this is part of the, it's germane, and it would be considered a part of what the intent of this legislation is. My concern here, Mr. Speaker, is that on Line 16, where the amendment, or where the proposed language, which reads, "No regularly licensed ordained minister or any priest or similar official of any religious organization is required to perform the solemnization of any marriage." In the case as it is today with us, Mr. Speaker, as members of this body, I know that, at least for the past four years, the Speaker has been gracious enough to ask whether any of us here would be performing any civil marriages. And if we do respond affirmative, then that, you know, we are indeed authorized, and our names are submitted to public health as authorized designees of the Speaker. What I, at least for myself, believe this, and what was, what the author of this legislation represented, is that now this language would make it really mandatory for any of these who are authorized to perform marriages, must perform any marriage, not just same-sex, not just for same-sex couples, but even for opposite-sex couples. I, for one, Mr. Speaker, have chosen, it's been a choice that, since day one, that I don't perform any marriages, whether it be the opposite sex, or now for same-sex couples. And so my concern here is that with this language, it kind of makes that reference where, you know, you are, you know, you must perform a civil marriage. I know it says here, "The Speaker of the Legislature or his or her designee," as I mentioned, our Speaker has been gracious to put that question before us, but in the future, any Speaker could then designate all members of the body as authorized to perform, you know, any civil marriage. So my amendment, Mr. Speaker, is to add after, on Line 17, "After organization," or any of those listed above. And so you strike out "or" from Line 16, "After any priest, comma, similar official of any religious organization," and I would like to propose we add, "Or any of those listed above is required to perform the solemnization of any marriage." And so that's, unless I'm correct, otherwise.
Well, in the next section, Section 3205, it's not on the bill, because there's no amendment to it. And under current law, it's obligatory upon a judge, the Director of Revenue and Taxation, the Director of Administration, or the Director of Public Health and Social Services. The duty of solemnizing the marriage ceremony on any day shall be obligatory upon the judges, the Director of Revenue and Taxation, the Director of Administration, and the Director of Public Health and Social Services. It is by statute obligatory for those. For the others on this list, in 3204, I believe that the Speaker has recognized that some of us have religious concerns and don't do weddings, don't do marriages. And so she has asked specifically, and unless she specifically apply to her for the opportunity or for the designation, it is not something that is forced upon any member of the legislature to perform. And once, if you accept, then that's a wholly different story. But under 3205, it's only those four that are required to do so. And it's not obligatory on any of you to take it on upon yourself to perform them. You do them if you will. I mean, if you want. And I'd hate to start breaking that down, because, and I think I sent some of you an article that just came out this morning in Governing Daily. It just came out this morning, and so...
Or, Mr. Speaker, maybe we can take a short recess to discuss this?
Yes, and, all right. We're back on the record. Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, based on discussions with the author and some of our colleagues, you know, I'm okay to withdraw my motion and just make it very clear that, you know, I want to make it clear that my understanding and based on the author's representation is that it's not, you know, the language in section nine where it states, "Who may solemnize weddings" is still an option. Will still be an option, except as those who are stated in law in the next section that makes it mandatory for them to perform any marriage. So we'll go ahead and keep that, but the intent is not to now make it mandatory for, let's say, the Speaker or any senator here to perform any marriage, to perform any civil marriage. I want to make that clear on the record, that that's not what this legislation does. Okay? And also, Mr. Speaker, on line twelve, it references Director of Revenue and Taxation or Director of Administration. And I know on the section that you have read earlier, I believe section thirty-two oh five, it states that the Director of Administration and the Director of Public Health are those who are obliged, who are obligated to perform any civil marriage. And so perhaps what we should do is strike off Revenue and Taxation Director and include Public Health Director instead, just to comply with that section.
Well, that would mean we'd have to amend thirty-four, thirty-two oh five. Well, no, it's Administration's still in there. Actually, all we have to do is add Public Health.
Okay. So not and not remove Revenue and Taxation.
No, the three Directors.
Great. So just to comply with the next and to make it in sync with section thirty-two oh five, to add the Public Health Director into sub-item four.
On that amendment?
No objection.
Thank you. Senator Munyabane.
Manana Sajous, Mr. Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on bill one-one-nine-thirty-three COR. Mr. Speaker, I too have no problem with this legislation and applaud the efforts of Senator Underwood in moving this legislation forward to providing equal protection for all families in Guam by creating an equality in civil marriages. But I don't know if this is a part of what is needed for grammatic change, but I was reading the legislative intent, and it just kind of struck me or puzzled me that, and if I can read it, on section two, it says, "The legislature recognizes that on June fifth, two thousand and fifteen, the District Court of Guam ruled that existing marriage laws in Guam are unconstitutional." And maybe, maybe if I could, that's what the intent is. So if I'm reading it that literally, it says that existing marriage laws on Guam are unconstitutional, and that means even worse than my brother Frank, I would be not married at all because it's unconstitutional. But maybe if I read it like this, I like to proffer an amendment because I understand the intent, but maybe if I just read it that on section two legislative intent, Elastitura in Guam recognizes that on June fifteenth, two thousand and, June fifth, two thousand and fifteen, the District Court of Guam ruled relative to existing marriage laws in Guam pursuant to this ruling, and take out, delete, are unconstitutional. I just, because the, I don't know, maybe somebody can enlighten me because I don't think all the marriage laws on Guam are unconstitutional. I mean, I'm just --
It was only unconstitutional as it related to those three words. And so for everything else, it was constitutional.
And I understand that when you further read, but when you read it to this intent, I mean, if you're going to delete the intent once we engross, then it would make a difference, but at least for me grammatically. I don't know, maybe, maybe, I know you're shaking your head in disgust, but I'm just, maybe a second to ask legal counsel what --
Okay. We'll take a second. Back on the record.
Mr. Speaker, let me clarify that.
Speaker, you can turn me off.
So, Mr. Speaker, the intent of the amendment was, and we would add, pursuant to this ruling, the legislature intends to comply with the District Court of Guam's judgment and amends local statute to allow for the same-sex marriage in Guam. Or we could even delete that and says, after the word unconstitutional, as it relates to same-sex marriage. So I put that on the floor for discussion as an amendment, and it would not bother me if we took my amendment or the shorter version to include as it relates to same-sex marriage, just so that we clarify.
Any objection, Dan, the last three words after unconstitutional on line six? Does legal counsel understand that? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
No objection? Did you wish to speak on the?
I'm okay.
On the main motion, any other senator wished to be heard? On the main motion? All right. On the main motion, do you, any senator wished to be heard? Senator Underwood, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And so I really don't have much to say, but just to thank my colleagues for strengthening the bill, and I, I once again move to place bill one-nineteen thirty-three to the third reading file.
On that motion, send down to voting file. No objection.
Yay.
Next, on the agenda, Senator Rodriguez, do you wish to be heard on your bill one-one-six?
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place bill one-one-six dash thirty-three as introduced on the third reading and be allowed to briefly discuss it.
Any objection? Hearing none.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, bill one-one-six is enacted to authorize the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center to fully implement its fee schedule that was passed by this body about two years ago, and it was the first time, and thanks to you, that this fee schedule was put into place. However, there was a provision that prohibited them from moving forward in billing and eventually, you know, collecting any fees for any services done until they became CMS certified. And so that has really put a big hamper on them because at that time, even without, you know, they were, you know, they had some fee schedule in place that where they were able to bill and collect from private, third-party payers, private insurance. And so with the law having been effect that prohibited them from doing any or having that language, they took it, or their legal counsel took it as they can't do anything, even with these private insurance companies. And so what we're doing now, Mr. Speaker, is just removing that and having them now pursue the fee schedule that we have passed. They are still moving forward and getting accreditation on their programs and services through the Commission on Accreditation and Rehabilitative Facility, I believe that's CARF. It's called CARF. And so that is something that they're targeting to be able to complete by next year or 2017, early part of 2017. However, I believe, and I asked my colleague to support this so that the groundwork and the foundation can really be set so that when that time happens, they really have the infrastructure in place. I know that the fiscal note that was submitted with this had indicated the potential revenue of about half a million dollars that would be collected. When the fee schedule was first, you know, when it was first introduced and moved forward, there was a higher amount that we were looking at collecting, but I think this half a million is really conservative figure. We know that even with the department moving forward with new services like the New Beginnings three-point-seven program, which is an inpatient residential drug treatment program, we know that even with self-pay and private insurance members, that they would be able to collect. I know also that the Department of Public Health is revising their state plan to allow for behavioral health services to be covered under the Medicaid state plan. And so this really is a win-win for the department and for the people of Guam. It's revenue generating, and, Mr. Speaker, I ask my colleagues to please support this so that we can help one of our important agencies move forward and be sustainable. So thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. On the motion? Senator Espaldón?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a couple of things. I'm not in opposition to this bill, although I do, I would like to ask the author a question if he would yield. And the question, I guess, the first question would be, in terms of the certified status for this, to be, to be given, or excuse me, let me just phrase it a different way. This would, the fee schedule would not have been possible until after a certified status by the Centers of Medicare and Medicaid Services. The first question is, why was that part of the original bill? In other words, why did we put that constraint? Why did the legislature put a constraint that certification needed to happen before we implemented the fees? And if the author would yield, I'd appreciate it.
Senator Rodriguez, would you like to yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, that language was added on the floor when the fee schedule, the legislation was moved forward. Maybe ask the vice speaker if he would yield.
Yes. Vice Speaker, you're recognized on the point.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker is the original author several years ago of this legislation. I was convinced by someone who I trusted that it was imperative to put this language in because of the fear that people would not get care if they didn't, if they couldn't apply for Medicare and Medicaid. What I did not realize was that CMS, what I had created by putting that language in was a virtual impossibility. CMS could never certify and approve the billing schedule or give certification unless and until there was a history of fees being charged and services being provided, and they were able to tell what the baseline was. That's the problem that we're having with the hospital now with Tefra, that the reason why their Tefra rates are stuck in the nineteen nineties was because it, under the Tefra rules, hospitals on Guam, and more especially throughout the country, the psychological hospitals had to have a year or so experience of fee schedules and, I mean, fee implementation and services before CMS could make the approval and Medicaid and Medicare could go, could start covering. By including that language when I was talked into it, it made it so that Medicare and Medicaid could never approve it because there was never going to be a baseline from which to do it. And that's why you see right now, there's an issue with GRMC and its rates because it needs to set its Tefra rate, it's really high. And hopefully, after it gets its CMS certification, the rates will come back down. But in order to set the standard much higher so that they don't have the same problem with GMH, they, their rates are really high. But my including it in the original legislation a couple of years ago made it a legal impossibility to implement. And so I thank Senator Rodriguez for addressing this and getting them out of this circular table that they were on and never being able to get off.
Senator Espaldón, does that answer your inquiry?
It certainly does, and I appreciate that answer, just to make sure we have a good understanding of why we haven't been able to achieve certified status from the Center of Medicare and Medicaid Services. The second issue I'd like to at least bring up is basically the substance of this legislation itself, and that's to change the effective date. Shall become effective July first, two thousand and fifteen. I'm not sure if that really passes muster in terms of the contact clause. In other words, if there were some patients that have been going there and were charged the existing fees, and then we go back and now say, well, this is retroactive to July first, then, again, I think there might be a discrepancy in something like that. I was wondering if the author would perhaps at least shed some light on, I guess, first, the legality of doing this that way, and if there might be an alternative to move it back so that it reflects the enactment of this legislation.
Senator Rodriguez, would you like to answer that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I guess this was introduced in June, in early part of June, and so the desire at that time was to see if we can get this addressed back then, and that's why the effective date was to make it as soon as possible. why the effective date was to make it as soon as possible, right? And so now that we're in August, I'm fine if we remove that and just make it effective upon enactment.
So would you like to move a motion on that section, Senator Espaldón?
I would imagine we would have to, and that would be to strike Section 6 and replace it with the words, with the words in Section 3, the effective date. This act shall be effective upon enactment. So the motion would be to strike the, this act shall become, this act shall become effective July 1, 2015.
And just keep Section 3 in?
And just keep Section 3 in. Or actually, what would happen, I would imagine it was a technical adjustment to make Section 3, Section 2.
Okay. On that motion? We're going to take a brief recess. Just to reiterate, I do know that the author of the legislation was talking about a timeline, so I'm going to pose that as a question again on the actual effective date and ask Senator Rodriguez to chime in. Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And in consultation with our legal counsel, I think it's best that we leave that because it's two different, two different laws that we reference. One is the effective date of Section 3 of this act, but on Section 6, it's what the existing law is. And so perhaps the most prudent thing to do is that we set a date, and so this act, so line 15, be this act shall become effective September 1 of this year. And so...
So...
Madam Speaker, if I may, then I will withdraw my amendment, any amendment I made in favor of the author's proposed effective date. And again, the concern was just to make sure that we weren't basically in contradiction to the contracts clause. Thank you.
And thank you, Senator Espaldón, but I'm going to have Vice Speaker Cruz do a point of information, I best, probably best clarify this.
Thank you.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Unfortunately, this bill needs two effective date provisions. We want to go back and correct the effective date of the previous public law of when that was going to go into effect, and we had placed it at CMS certification. There has to be a date. So if it's September 1, have both of them September 1. We'll comply with his concerns, and we'll have a starting date.
Okay. So, thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Espaldón, would you like to reflect that?
Yes, and that would be the motion, that both clauses, both sections reflect that this shall be effective on September 1 of 2015. And I appreciate the input from everybody.
Anyone wishing to speak on the dates? There is a motion out, so the effective date for Section 6 on line 15 is September 1, 2015, and then on Section 3, Senator Espaldón's motion was also to have the effective date, take out upon enactment and put September 1, 2015. So on that motion, I'm going to have Senator Rodriguez speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And so I agree with that, as we said, we'll set a date, but perhaps maybe we should just delete Section 3 on the effective date because, you know, as it is, is that once it's signed by the governor, it's enacted upon, it's enacted then. So instead of saying, we're waiting till September 1 to enact this, it's enacted immediately.
Okay, so on the Rodriguez amendment to the Espaldón amendment, we're going to move to strike Section 3 on line 18 in its entirety on that motion. Any objections? No objections, motion carries. Then we'll go back to the Espaldón amendment, and that is to, this act shall become effective September 1, 2015. On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, motion carries. Senator Espaldón, you still have the floor. Would you care to speak on the main motion?
Thank you for allowing me the time, Madam Speaker. I'm done.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak? Vice Speaker Cruz on the main motion, you're okay? If not, Senator Rodriguez, would you like to close? On the motion to put it down without any objection, down to third reading file. Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we do have one more piece of legislation at this time, Bill Number 139... I do apologize, Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the matter of Bill 139-33 by Senator, introduced by Senator Tom Adams, and this is relative to the adoption of the rules and regulations for the commercial leases and licenses for the Chumor Land Trust properties. Our Oversight Chair, Senator Tom Adams, has been diligently, continues to diligently work with the Director of Chumor Land Trust Commission and Land Management, Mike Bora, and has expressed to us that more time is needed as he's noticed that some other areas of these proposed rules and regulations need to be further cleaned up. And having said that, that he's requesting that this matter be set aside, but advising the body that action will be needed by September 1 of this year, as you also pointed out at the last Rules Meeting, Madam Speaker, and that Chairman Adams is confident that he will certainly meet this deadline. And so having said that and having there being no other matter before the body by way of the second reading file, I move that we recess till 2:00 this afternoon so that we can proceed to the voting file.
Thank you on that motion. Without any objections, motion carries. We are in recess till 2:00 p.m. this afternoon. Thank you.